I'd like to call to order the Woodburn City Council meeting of April 25, 2020. Please rise for the flag, salute. All right, we have the roll call, please.
Counselor Cabralis?
Here.
Here.
Counselor Swanson?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Here.
Counselor Shaw?
Here.
Counselor Cornwell?
Present.
Counselor Fuente?
Here.
Here.
Mayor Swenson?
Here. All right, before we start, many of you are aware that we've had a difficult day in in Woodburn, and I'm going to let city administrator.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, somebody may be seeing in the news today that one of our police officers, Jesse Ponse, was shot in the line of duty this morning while being deployed with Marion County SWAT team. I can report to you tonight that Jesse is stable and talking to family, and we were very encouraged encouraged by that. And, Mr. Mayor, I also just want to take a moment to thank everybody that's reached out to this organization, to our police department, the variety of agencies and community members who have expressed support for our police officers and all of our first responders. I think today shows that public safety and police work is dangerous work, and it takes a kind of courage and dedication to service for people who want to protect our community and who, when called, show up. So our thoughts and our prayers are with Jesse and his family, and with men and women of the Woodburn Police Department, and with all of our first responders who show up every day and show up when they're called. And, you know, I will hope to keep you posted as things move forward with that. But I want this council to know that, you know, we're we're working hard to support Jesse tonight.
Lighter note, we'd like to welcome our newest Marion County Circuit Court judge, who's appointed appointed to appointed by the governor to serve us, and we'd like Mr. Aries Johnson to
Aries.
Aries Johnson to tell us a little bit about yourself.
How are you? Did I talk to you? Did I talk to the crowd? Thank you. Judge Aries Johnson, I'm still getting used to saying that. Got appointed on February 2nd, sworn in February 14th, which is Oregon's birthday. Took the bench on March 1st, so newest judge from New York. Been here for about 10 years, been practicing for about 20 years. Before I came to the bench, I had a solo practice in Salem where I was doing court-appointed indigent criminal defense, as well as civil rights and discrimination. Prior to that, I was a legislative worked as a legislative director for Representative Janelle Bynum in the Oregon Legislature. Before that, I was Director of Civil Rights for the Oregon Attorney General. Before that, I had my own practice. New York, real quick, did corporate securities. I used to work for the city attorney for the city of New York, so I defended police officers, correctional individuals. I also clerked for a judge in New York. And in the Bronx, in New York, the lowest level is the Supreme Court. So if you look me up and see that I clerked for a Supreme Court judge, it is the trial. So I've written hundreds of opinions. So I have been going around Marion County, appearing at neighborhood association meetings. This is my first city council meeting because I'm trying to demystify the process. You know, one of my things about access to justice is you need to see who your officials are. You need to know they're real people with their same causes and concerns as everybody else, and I'm not afraid to be held accountable. So God forbid you see my name in a newspaper. You know who I am. You know where to find me, just as y'all. Come out and let everybody see who you are, and you do your business in the light. That's what I'm just trying to represent. So I just really thank y'all for letting me come here and say my piece.
I appreciate it.
Wow, thank you.
And you were telling me ahead of time, you moved here. Your wife has roots in Oregon and the areas.
Yeah, she's from Oregon. She went to Tuppence. She went to Gatlin Gable. She was in Salem and Portland, and she brought me here as we were dating for Thanksgiving. And I really, I love Salem, but it really breaks my heart to see how it's changed. When I first came here, it was a quiet kind of town, and then I slowly saw it kind of grow, and now you see the houselessness and what's going on, and the mall is closing. So, you know, that's my community. I'm really invested in this, so hopefully if we all work together, we can turn it around.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Circuit Court judge?
Circuit Court judge, yes.
So you're working for Tracy Prowl?
Yes, for Tracy Prowl. Let's use Tracy Prowl, doing Domrell, criminal, civil. I don't turn anything away. I invite people to come to my courtroom, 4B. If you ever want to, you know, just like you, you can come and actually watch me do my job. I'm open to critiques and criticisms. We have an open kind of judicial system, and that's one of the things I think that makes our country great, our judicial process and the ability to resolve conflicts in an open, speedy type of way. Try and invite, invite them to come on down, watch what I do.
Well, you couldn't work for a better person.
It is. She's
She's a she's a wonderful jurist.
All of the judges are, actually. I've been really brought into a really inviting environment, and it's a sea change from coming from the Bronx to come here, but everybody's been super supportive in my rise to the bench, so I really appreciate it.
Are you a native of Bronx?
Born in Brooklyn, spent a little time in the Bronx, a little time in Queens. So when people ask me, I claim Queens first and then the Bronx.
I'm from Queens.
What part?
Rockaway.
Bayside.
Oh, I know it well.
Does anybody remember the White Shadow?
Yes.
His character supposedly was from Bayside, Queens. So I think we just baited ourselves.
And the lady in the back is a native of Sycamore.
There it is. We're on Brooklands everywhere you go.
I'm glad the Woodburn City Council couldn't facilitate a reunite.
We're like, we're like a party.
We're all over the place. I know this, everybody tells.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, and thank you for putting me at the top of the, it's been a really long day.
Thank you, Your Honor. I hope you'll just rule in our favor every time. Thank you.
I won't respond to that.
Good choice.
Wow, you're starting off so well.
Maybe quit while I'm ahead.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, Judge.
Thanks for visiting.
Okay. So next, we are, we have a proclamation for Building Safety Month, but we have some fine people in our building safety departments.
Appreciate the proclamation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. If I could jump in front of the proclamation just for a second, I'm Chris Kirk, Community Development Director. I wanted to introduce to y'all, for those of you who don't know her, Alyssa Nichols. She's our permit technician, and she's going to walk through some of the measures that our building divisions going to be undertaking this month for Building Safety Month. She really has shown a lot of enthusiasm and innovation in how we might do this the right way. Excited to introduce and have her walk you through.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. Thank you for having me. My name is Alyssa, and I serve as a permit technician in the Community Development Department. I'm here this evening to share with you about Building Safety Month and the building division's plans to celebrate this campaign and engage the Woodburn community in it as well. Building Safety Month is a worldwide campaign presented by the International Code Council, and its purpose is to promote building safety to each of the participating communities. Each week in the month of May, our department will spotlight topics and themes that are provided by the International Code Council that can help make our community safer and more sustainable. Up on the screen is just an example of what we'll be presenting to the public. These themes include energy and innovation, careers and building safety, disaster preparedness, and water safety. So all up on the screen, you'll see that this is Week One, Energy and Innovation, and you will see that there is a crossword puzzle that is for the kids to complete, and ideally they will be able to complete the activity and then come in and get one of the prizes that we've got for them. We've got some safety vests, sticker, hard hat, and a pencil, and we also have some other hats with the City of Woodburn logo on it as well. So that's just an example of what Week One looks like, and then we will do that for Week Two, Week Three, and Week Four, and each week does have a kid's activity on it. We've created a webpage that is dedicated solely to the Building Safety Month, allowing community members to learn tips and tricks for safety and access additional resources provided by outside agencies as well. Each week, people will be able to see statistics related to building safety, as well as tricks to try at home to build and maintain safety in their home. We're working with the city's Public Affairs and Communications Manager to get the information out weekly through Facebook and through the e-blast, and the public library is going to be a location that kids can grab building safety activity packet that they can complete the activities and then come turn it in as well. There's a lot of great resources online that we'll make available as well. Our vision for participating in this campaign is that the content we're providing will engage adults in learning tricks to help maintain safety, and the activities uploaded will engage the kids, ideally creating household conversations. We're looking forward to participating in this campaign and increasing our outreach in the community in future campaigns to come. Thank you for having me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excuse me, Alyssa. Will those packets be available at the library?
Yes.
For all the children?
Yep.
When will they be available?
Starting May 1st. So it's through the entire month of May, so they'll be available May 1st through the end of May.
Okay.
Yep, and we'll print off more as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Mono, bilingual, or trilingual?
Right now, they're provided just in English. We didn't have enough time this year, but hopefully next year. That was one of the things we talked to the library, one of the librarians about was getting them in additional languages for next year.
I have a safety-related question. I was always curious if there were different colors of safety vests, safety vests had a different meaning?
I don't know the answer to that one.
You know, I've seen yellow vests, I've seen orange vests, red vests, and I wonder, do they mean anything different?
Nope.
Just visual, I guess.
I know they allow the yellow and the orange on the job site.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Interesting question.
Just a curiosity. Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome ideas. Was Chris going to speak to the? Was Chris going to speak to the? Was that it?
I believe that was it.
That was it? Okay.
Yeah, I believe I believe Chris was here just to support the presentation.
Alyssa nailed it.
She did.
Next.
All right.
Mic drop.
Next, we're reading it. Whereas the City of Woodburn is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depend on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play in everyday life, and whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of the building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, electricians, and others in the construction industry who are diligently to ensure the safe construction of our built environment. And whereas adopted building codes ensure the safety of our built environment and include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as wind and snowstorms, wildland fires, floods, earthquakes. And whereas the Safety for All Building Codes in Action, the theme for Building Safety Month 2022, encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all to all of our benefit. And whereas in observance of the Building Safety Month, the community of Woodburn is asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and to acknowledge the essential services provided to us by all local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting the lives and property of our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Woodburn that the month of May 20, May 2022 is Building Safety Month, and as mayor, I encourage all residents to join communities across America with participation in the Building Safety Month activities. I think there should be some applause at the end of that. Some, thank. Okay, next, we have Business from the Public. All right, Consent Agenda. You have our city recorder read the consent agenda.
The items on the consent agenda are as follows: Woodburn City Council Minutes of April 11, 2022, and crime statistics through March 2022.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Okay, so we have public hearings, and so we're going to open the public hearing for Legislative Amendment 2101, Amendment to the Woodburn Development Ordinance.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor. Colin Cortez, our senior planner, will be out in a second. He's, I think, loading up the presentation for y'all. That's right, give me a little chance to do a quick little introduction on the on the project before he comes out. He gives you more details, help you answer any questions you might have about the legislative amendments. First, I want to make sure I don't forget to thank the Planning Commission for all the work that they did in this. I sometimes forget to do that, and I shouldn't. He'll talk about the number of meetings they've had on this particular project. But I did want to take a second to just talk about what I think of as kind of overarching themes that staff kind of goes into projects like this that we take with us, and we do this for all code amendments, anytime we're modifying our zoning code in WDO. We're always trying to make sure that we're creating predictability and certainty in our codes, and it's not just for the benefit of applicants, developers. It really helps the public understand what the expectations are, because it's really about setting expectations. This is one of the real challenges all cities have as they're trying to monitor and regulate development that comes into their community. When you have that predictability and certainty, and you set those expectations, helps the public understand and kind of have a little more trust in what's taking place. Applicants understand it, and of course, staff can more easily interpret the code. The other theme I like to think about is this idea that we're always trying to make sure that we require public improvements for individual developments to the greatest extent allowable under the code. It's really about making sure that a proportionate share is paid from applicants to mitigate the impacts they have on the on the community. The idea, and it's really one about creating equity, is that development should pay for its own way in making sure residents aren't subsidizing development. And you can think of some of those teams, those themes in these code amendments. Some of them deal with what we call street adjustments, which is sort of like a minor variance. And what it does, it allows, first, it sets these very clear standards that we have for street improvements, for example, and then it has this sort of second way to come through. And if you need more flexibility, it gives you a path and a clear route to get there. Another one that I think of in here that talks about this or gets to these two ideas is the way we're dealing with what we call traffic impact analysis. We have TIAs. It's a traffic study that we require for most developments, but not all. So we're changing some of those thresholds to make sure that we get them, and we can look more closely at the traffic impacts for applications. That lets us look at what kind of mitigation factors we need to, that we can apply, and then, of course, we do it again to the greatest level we can and make sure it's proportionate. Getting that information upfront and writing that into the code is really helpful for us, helps us kind of get to those goals. I think this package does a good job of kind of balancing those things. It's never easy, right? Set the standards, but give them flexibility. Everybody has challenges with it. I think this, I think this gets us a lot closer, and it's a good improvement to the code. And again, we're generally supportive, we are supportive of it, sorry about that, and the Planning Commission's recommendation. Go ahead, Colin, and just Colin Cortez, Senior Planner. He's been working on this and the other code amendments for probably six straight months now.
Yes, it has been a while. Thank you, Chris, for that good introduction. So I'll go ahead and load the PowerPoint presentation for this item tonight and be on our way shortly. So as Chris was overviewing, the item before you tonight is a public hearing for an amendment to the Woodburn Development Ordinance on the topic of transportation. And to give a little more background, this is an action that is a land use type five, meaning it's a legislative action. You have the ability as the council to make law and policy, and there's a lot of leeway when you do this, as opposed to a quasi judicial application for development of a specific piece of land. So I wanted to help put that contrast before you to help you understand the nature of the item for you tonight. And more specifically to this case, I confirm that the Planning Commission, as was necessary, did have a public hearing of its own on this item. It unanimously recommends that the council approve it. And what staff is recommending as a result of that tonight is that the council make a motion to tentatively approve this Legislative Amendment 21-01 and direct staff to returns and ordinance for adoption. But of course, before we get there, give some more background about what this is. So the WDO, as sometimes happens, needs amendment to do various things because conditions change. In this case, it's to fully administer the relatively new Transportation System Plan or TSP. That's a council adopted three years ago at this point, almost three years ago. And also to clarify and strengthen the development standards that talk about the transportation improvements that come with land developments, which is a particularly important issue in terms of administering the WDO for developments. In terms of timeline, it goes back to when the TSP was adopted in September 2019, and then the council also directed that the development ordinance be amended to fully implement the TSP. Since that time, things have happened. There was that little thing called the coronavirus pandemic, there were council elections, and time passed very quickly. And thankfully, the council did pass a second resolution in a sense reinitiating what it had already authorized, which was amending the WDO to implement the TSP. More recent history, September of last fall, the Planning Commission had its own workshop about this item. Staff was willing to get its feedback on some ideas and some edits at that point. And the last workshop the commission had was this past January, and based on that, the commission felt comfortable having a public hearing, which it did on February 10th, and made its recommendation. And then the council did have its own work session already back towards the end of March. So what I'll do for the next few slides is highlight items from the summary list of what the amendments do. This numbered list is found in the staff memo, and I won't go through every item of the 18 or so on the list, but I will pick out the ones that I think will be of most interest to the council, indicated by their numbers and parentheses. So one of the first ones in the list is to improve the concept of nonconformance, which admittedly is a very abstract, strange concept to wrap your head around. What nonconformance indicates is that something about development that exists today doesn't conform with the regulations required for development today, typically just because the development may have been around so long that it doesn't comply with rules today. So if it was built new today, it would have to be different in some way to conform. That's the idea. And it applies both to how land is used, so the use of land, and also to the physical aspects of development, like setbacks, height, that sort of thing. There's a section in the WDO about that. It's not very easy to implement. There's a lot of questions about what exactly the text means. It's been a longstanding issue, one the director has identified for a long time, and particularly because the chapter is not very clear on how it relates to street improvements and transportation. Staff saw it as necessary to address this issue as part of this project. Two things it would accomplish is to not discourage minor redevelopment projects, and it does so by making it clear as to what level of nonconformance is necessary to require a clear and objective, specific list of upgrades, and when development is to such a degree that full conformance would be required. And a second item that it would accomplish is to make explicit that nonconformance just by itself is a thing. It doesn't lessen or eliminate obligation due street improvements when those are required by other provisions of the WDO. Item 4A, in the same vein of improvement, clarifies the Street Improvements Chapter, which is 3.01. Basically, it improves the standards and clarifies how they're meant to be implemented. There are also changes that acknowledge a number of the city's adopted long-range plans, in particular, the Mill Creek Rumea Master Plan, in order to implement the walking and cycling improvements that plans like these envision for the city. At the moment in the code, they're not mentioned at all, and so it's just up to staff to alert developers that these plans exist and entice them to do things in service of those plans. Item seven is to clarify existing standards for traffic impact analyses, what most people just call a traffic study. And one of the big changes is we're going to require more developments to do them, so we'll lower the threshold for when they're required. Number eight is to make explicit that they're supposed to be paid by pedestrian access between a sidewalk and a building main entrance. It's easy to take that for granted. Most developers do do that as a matter of course, but it's not in the code, and it's also not required by building code. So this is something that staff wants to make explicit. And going along with that is where walkways cross parking areas, is to have the crossings of those driveways be visibly distinct in some way, so they're safer. Item 12 improves and increases the bicycle parking requirement in the code. Does a number of things. It requires a greater amount, particularly for apartments. It clarifies an existing standard of how close it has to be to a building, both in additional text and with new figures. There's new explicit stall dimensions of, for what is bicycle parking. There's guidance on the equipment, for example, racks used for the parking, as well as signage to direct people to where the parking is if it's not visible from the street, and then to provide some amount of coverage or sheltering of bicycle parking from the weather. Item 14 is to require more parking area landscaping, essentially through additional landscaped islands and peninsulas, in the middle at the ends of parking aisles. Most cities require that. The code now, at the moment, doesn't. Item 17 is to improve an existing land use application type that staff calls a street exception. It has a much longer formality than the code, and the proposal is to call it a street adjustment to better reflect its purpose, and that is so that when developers want to ask for something, I guess in a way to, if you use the metaphor of a menu in a restaurant, when a developer wants to order off the menu or modify or substitute a dish, instead of having to go right to a variance, which is a very demanding process for a developer that requires a lot of scrutiny, they can use this process essentially to customize and establish standards that are clear, that may not be in the code but are clear for that development and apply standards for that development question. And the changes that are proposed here will make it easier for people who are reading the code to understand that this is what this application process is for and how to go about using the process for that, to get those custom improvements. So what's happened since the last work session the council had? There has not been much, actually. We've gotten a few questions of staff from some interested members of the public about the changes. For example, I got a call from a resident last week about a new chapter related to lighting. Her interest was that her neighbor had some lighting that she didn't like. Beyond that, she wasn't particularly interested in the package, and I directed her to the text, as well as the nuisance ordinance that addresses lighting. The Humboldt Association of Marion and Polk County had some interest and questions from staff. We made a few tweaks to some of the language a couple of weeks ago before the work session in response to their concerns, and they had not submitted any written testimony. And otherwise, staff has not made any major edits of the amendment since you last saw it on March 28. So I do have images, mostly recycled from the work session, about the items in the list, but since you have seen them before, I didn't want to make you sit through every one of them, so I'd like to take the opportunity to see if you have any questions, and would like to move forward with that in deliberation.
I have a question about the picture I'm looking at right there, where I'm seeing a sidewalk and street trees, because what I've heard from individuals about the new developments is that, maybe this is totally off, not when I should be asking this, but is that, maybe this is totally off, not when I should be asking this, but they're just saying that it doesn't look homey or like a development. And I guess my question related or not related is, are these trees that I see planted here long term? Or are they something that is like a 10 to 15 year and then we're going to have to replace them again? Because trees are so important size wise to make it look more.
I will start off by saying that trees do have an ultimate lifespan that is made shorter just by being in a city environment. So being in a planter strip, however wide it is, will limit the lifespan of a tree to, I believe, from what I've learned, to something like 40 to 60 years, depending. In this case, the typical planter strip required today is about six feet width. And the extent depends on other things that may be present, like utility vaults, underground pipes and that sort of thing. But generally, when they're planted and they're maintained and irrigated, they will last barring some unforeseen circumstance or accident disaster.
The trees I see here, they're called street trees. Are those trees that the city put in or the builder put in or the person put in? Who put those trees in?
Typical answer is that the city requires a developer to put them in and the developer will spend the time and money to make that happen.
Because it's unfortunate that if a person knows that the tree only has a lifespan and they see that it's kind of time to take it out, that a few years ahead of time, they don't get another tree planted in the same area to accommodate when the other tree is out, so it just doesn't look like a bear. Anyway, I just, my concern is the new neighborhoods look really bare right now. And I know it's wintertime, but the trees are just not established and I'm just hopeful.
I'll add too that one of the disappointing things you can think about about new development is it doesn't look like an established neighborhood precisely because not enough time has yet passed for trees to grow. When they're planted, the minimum size is two inches in caliber, which indeed is small. But given even just 10 years, they will begin to look like what people envision when they think of a tree.
Colin, just if I may, just a real quick, you remember, we're doing a couple of code amendment packages at the same time. Which amendment package is recommending additional street trees? Is it the other one, Colin?
This would be number three.
Just give a quick brief and let them know that that's proposed in 30 days or so.
Okay, so the brief summary is, you might remember, because of the ice storm last February, the tree canopy in the city took a wallop. And the council said there must be an improvement, essentially. And so staff has been working to shepherd three amendment packages, trees being one of them. And so in about the next month or so, there's a schedule I refer to. But in any case, it'll propose regulations specifically for private property, so outside the street, then improve how trees are preserved and when they're allowed to be removed, how that process goes about. I do want to reassure you that today we do have an ordinance that protects street trees. So once they're planted, property owners are obligated to maintain them. And for those who do want to remove them for whatever reason, there's a permit process and fee to do that, reviewed by the public works department. And typically, a replacement is, or a fee, I believe, is required.
And I was just going to point out, one of the recommended modifications in here related to street trees is to increase the number from every 50 feet of frontage to every 30 feet of frontage. Is that correct, Colin?
Yes.
This was an issue that was raised and discussed at the planning commission as well. The idea, and this will lead to, again, other code amendments related to middle housing, but different ways to create a more enticing streetscape. And one of those things is more trees, the others to look at which kind of trees should be prohibited. And then the separate section of how we deal with them once they're installed.
That's specifically my follow up question is, in relation to the middle housing rules that we're working with and we're looking at smaller footprints, how do we achieve greater tree size if we're being required to put more square footage housing on a piece of property? And part B to that question is, how do we take into consideration the situation that we're in now, where we're already working with property owners who have to have, well, Mary Beth knows, in her neighborhood especially, we've got sidewalks that are a hot mess due to the root structure of these large trees that we really want. So does this, does the language of this ordinance take into consideration the fact that these planter strips, I think, Chris, you just said they're narrower. Yeah? Did you just?
No, I'm sorry. I was going to say that we, the requirement under this code provision that's before you this evening would be to increase the number of trees along your frontage. I don't mean the width of the landscape with barrier. I'm sorry about that.
No, I heard that.
Linear feet along your front.
But I thought, to rewind, I thought you specifically said in relation to the middle housing and that we actually restricted the strip size. Did I not hear that?
No, I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Oh, no, you probably, I probably mislistened.
But we will be talking about the middle housing in about 45 minutes or an hour in great detail.
Well, I can partially answer the question. And then in this amendment package for you, it gets at the issue indirectly by having in some instances for some developments, a minimum requirement for alleys or shared rear lanes. And the reason I mention that is where development has an alley, it helps reduce the burden of having driveways on a street. And if fewer driveways means more continuous planter strip, which means more street trees.
In my opinion, a canopy, I know it'll never be mature because where it at, it doesn't have the room for that. But I believe mature canopy of trees would actually slow the traffic down in that neighborhood. I'm already hearing people complain about how they just speed through like it's just a raceway to get from one point to another. And I don't know what the solution would be to change that. But I also have another question, and it's probably not the time to ask it, but is there still a tree program where we give, you can apply to give trees, plant trees in your yard? Jamie was running it, is that still active?
I believe so, but I haven't heard about it for a while. Not that it's not happening, it's just I don't know anymore. That's more recent.
And I believe Mr. Derrickson talked about getting a committee together to plant trees in the city, like a goal of 200 trees a year, something like that. I won't say just random, but just get trees out there somehow. That's still a possibility.
Yes.
Wrong time, I know.
That was like the tree of A, what was the catch?
I think it was something like that, yeah. We've talked, we've talked about a tree planting goal, to plant trees independent of code requirements on developments as a city project is to enhance the tree canopy in the community. Yeah, so I think that that's still a project we could do. It's what we've wanted to do. Honestly, it's just going to require some staffing and maybe a bit of trees, so. Yes, right.
On that line, and it is really relevant to this code provision. Colin really knows the language better than me, but there are several provisions in here that both require more landscaping with development. One is not just along, each house is going to have more trees along it. Street trees would be planted for a linear feet. We also have more landscaping required in parking areas, say, commercial, multifamily, industrial sites. Those are requirements that aren't there now. And we also clarify the idea of providing a fee in lieu. What's happened here historically is while there might be a requirement to plant a tree, say, in front of your house or in front of commercial sites, what happens oftentimes on the ground is they sort of compete for that same space once construction starts. Now there's a water meter, now there's a telephone pole, now there's a fire lane, now there's a sign that says no parking. Now there's a mailbox and a series of mailboxes. And what happens, I can be frank, is the tree becomes the last thing that gets planted and they can't fit it in there. We've had issues in the past. And they become an afterthought. So one of the things in here is there's a clarity about the fact that there is a fee for a replacement tree. And in addition, what we've been doing recently on our development approvals is actually write that in as a condition of approval. If you're not providing one, you pay money. And again, this comes back to equity, right? You're not getting out of planting a tree, you're still going to plant a tree. But if it so happens that it simply doesn't fit there for vision clearance issues and it's a safety problem, you still pay the money and then it falls into the city bank where we can go purchase trees to plant them wherever we want. This idea of planting the right tree in the right place is really important. And I think historically, there's been a problem of people not sort of paying their fair share, even in terms of street trees and trees in parking area. I think that can be helpful.
I thought the March 28 session, wasn't it March 28th we got together and did this? Where I thought it was extremely beneficial. And so this is a nice follow up, that was very helpful.
Thank you. Well, with that, I can only request that you kindly make a motion.
Okay, so we need to, do need to ask if there's testimony by proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there any other council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we tentatively approve LA 21-01.
Second.
Are we doing that now or?
We would, and it would probably be advisable also to direct staff to submit an ordinance because it does have to be in written form and we don't have it in ordinance form yet. So if we tentatively approved it as a council and then directed planning staff to submit an ordinance, they would most probably bring it back next meeting for a consideration.
And we direct staff to submit an ordinance for consideration at the next city council meeting.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, next we're going to open another public hearing for ordinance amendments to adopt updated transportation system development charges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Jim Rowell, Assistant City Administrator. The public hearing we're holding right now is to consider amendments to ordinance 2438. That's the transportation system development charges ordinance. You'll remember that at our second meeting in March, I think it was March 28th, we conducted a, or provided you with a presentation on the updates and changes to the transportation SDC methodology. I want to point out, we've got our consulting team with us here again tonight. We have John Gilarducci, Doug Gabbert, and Tim Wood, all from FCS Group. They did all of the legwork behind this pretty significant process to update the transportation SDC methodology. And they're available to answer any questions tonight. We won't go through the presentation again since we went through that once and there was a lot of good detailed information there. But I wanted to cover some of the key updates to the SDC ordinance amendments that are being considered by you tonight. And the updates to those ordinances will follow under general business. And then we have one other item related to this that I will mention as well. So a couple of key points included in the amendments. We're establishing an effective date of June 1st. We would typically do this 30 days after the adoption of an ordinance, but we're picking June 1st just because that's an easier date to kind of communicate out to the public and to developers. So it's a little longer than 30 days. The primary component of the amendment is to incorporate it into, is to incorporate the updated methodology that basically creates a formula and a process for how we assess system development charges to new development in Woodburn. And as we covered at the last presentation, the key objective is to make sure that new development pays its way and is contributing the funds necessary to expend the transportation infrastructure that's required because of the trend, because of that new development. And the key component is that we don't want those costs to be borne by the existing residents of Woodburn. We want those new developments to pay for that cost. So that's primarily what the objective of this update is. It's also important to note that in addition to establishing a citywide SDC charge for all land use types, whether it's residential, all the various types of commercial and industrial, there's also an interchange management area charge that is specific to the properties located within proximity of the interchange management area, or IMA as we call it. That was established in 2008 in advance of the interchange development project, which was completed in 2015. And the idea was, at the time, to identify the properties that were going to have the greatest impact on the interchange and also receive the greatest benefit. And at the time that the 2008 SDC methodology was implemented, we were collecting those SDC charges from the properties within the IMA to be used to fund that project in the future. So we were considering that an improvement fee. And you'll remember from the last meeting that we have improvement fees, which are collected in advance of the completion of a project. And then we also have reimbursement fees, which we use less often. But in this case, we're going to collect, continue to collect interchange management fees from those properties located within that IMA zone to reimburse the city for the expense that it already incurred to develop the interchange project, if that makes sense. So we're keeping an IMA charge. It just is transitioning from an improvement fee to a reimbursement fee. Otherwise, we have a consistent SDC charge that's applied to all developments throughout, throughout the city. And it's important to note too, if I wasn't clear, that the IMA charge is in addition to the citywide charge for those properties that are located within the IMA zone, if that makes sense.
So the IMA is on, can you give?
You know, I don't have a map for you, I apologize, but it includes kind of all of West Woodburn, around the outlet mall, down around kind of the Amazon site, even further south. Oh, thank you, Chris.
This doesn't have the actual IMA group, but it's essentially around the interstate. It does pick up most of the, if you think of the vacant industrial and commercial properties around the intersection, you can pretty much pick them up. The larger industrial pieces, a lot of commercial pieces along Stacy Island.
Thank you. What, you know, and this was included in the last, you know, in our existing SDC ordinance. But I want to point out too that there are instances where we've tried to identify all of the different like project types or land use types that we charge a specific SDC fee to. But occasionally, we'll have a development come in that's unique. And so the developer will say, well, I don't really fit any of these categories that you've pre-identified and I want to conduct a specialized analysis. And so we have a process for doing that. They pay a fee. It's likely that we would hire a consultant. We would split the cost of that consultant, who would then review that, do some analysis and determine if their, their specialized methodology is appropriate for their development. And then we would arrive at a fee that makes sense for them. So we call that, what do we call that? An alternative SDC calculation. So the ordinance provides the ability for the developer to do that.
What would be an example of a business that might think it qualifies for that?
So I guess we could take a warehouse type, which is one of our industrial uses. And there are all different sorts of warehouses. And, you know, of course, technology has changed a lot lately. And so you see, you know, there's not necessarily just your typical warehouse where it's a big, huge storage facility and product comes in and it sits there for a long time. And it may be a massive hundreds of thousands of square feet of warehouse space with very few employees and maybe very few trips in and out. So their impact to the transportation system under that particular type might be really low. But then you have others where it might be higher than that because of whatever sort of processes they use for distribution. So typically, what you're going to see is a developer will come in and it won't be someone coming in with like your typical warehouse classification with pretty low transportation charges. That's going to be somebody where we say, we think you're, you kind of fit into this code where it's maybe the Amazon type where it's lots of trips, you know, and a lot of, a lot of impact to the transportation system. And they say, well, no, we're not really, we're not really that sort of an operation. And we have fewer trips, there's fewer product moving, fewer employees than that particular land use type, which is predetermined by what we call the IT manual. It's the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And so they've done a lot of studies on a lot of different project types across the country. And they've really drilled down on the specifics of a lot of these different types of developments. But they don't really hit every single one appropriately. So usually, a developer will come in and say, we don't agree with how you're classifying us. We think that our development is going to have less of a transportation impact than that particular type. And we have some data to back that up. And so there's a method for them to propose a different methodology.
You're formalizing that that language around applying.
Exactly. So we've got a process for that to take place. Yeah, and a lot of times that makes sense. And so we'll look at that with an open mind and determine if their methodology is reasonable or come to some other kind of compromise with them. So it doesn't happen very often, but but it's important to have that in there. And then finally, this isn't new either, but I just want to point it out that this ordinance provides that the actual fee schedule is established by resolution. So the ordinance provides the framework for the S SDC program. But then it says, in addition, the city council will adopt a resolution setting a very specific fee schedule. And then the ordinance allows for that to be updated annually due to the cost of construction increases. And we're seeing lots of those increases here recently. So more than likely, you'll see, like we've done kind of recently with the park SDC schedule, we've been increasing that annually because construction costs have been increasing. And so we want to be responsible for that, because the last transportation SDC methodology that the council adopted and the fee schedule that went with it was done in 2008, and it hasn't been updated since then, including the fee schedule. So our our current STCs for transportation are really quite a bit lower than than they should be. And so that's something that we want to stay on top of, and the ordinance provides for that. So later on the agenda tonight, you'll have the the ordinance amendments for your consideration. And then immediately following that, we'll actually have the resolution setting the fee schedule. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Jim, I've got a question about the appendix on this transportation system. It's got a list of projects that are three pages long, and they're identified by a project number. And the FCS group may have assigned the project number. R1, R2, R3. Is there an indication of where those projects are geographically located?
They just. I apologize, I don't have that in front of me, but I have a general sense of what you're referring to. And so there's a a list of proposed capital improvement projects that went into the calculation of the SDC charges that came out of this whole process. And every one of those has, of course, a number. R stands for roadway, if I remember correctly. So R1 would be roadway project 1, and then 2, and so on, and so forth. Those came out of the TSP. And so the TSP, as Colin referenced, was updated by and adopted by the council in 2019. And then this project was kicked off following that. And so we essentially take all of the projects that are identified in the TSP and then do an analysis of how much of those costs for completing each one of those projects is necessary because of development that's going to be occurring in the future. And then those SDC eligible costs are built into the charges that that we put forward through this process tonight. So without looking at that specific list, I can't tell you where R1 or R2 is located geographically.
Would that be in the would that be in the in the in the system plan?
It is in the in the TSP or the transportation system plan document. That's where all of those projects are identified. Yes.
Okay, that's all I need.
And counsel, I just would add that it's a good question, but identifying those projects and doing the analysis is a statutory requirement to make them SDC eligible.
Okay. If I have a question, I'll just look in the plan.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Is there any testimony by proponents? Any testimony from opponents? So close the public hearing. Our decision will come shortly. Okay, next, we move to general business.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Council Bill number 3181.
Council Bill 3181 has been duly introduced, and being an ordinance requires two readings. May we please have the first reading by title only, if there's no objection?
Council Bill number 3181, in ordinance amending and repealing sections of ordinance 2438, the transportation system development charges ordinance, based upon a methodology report dated April 2022, and setting an effective date.
Got our first reading of Council Bill 3181. I mean, now have our second reading, again, by title only, if there's no objection.
Council Bill number 3181, in ordinance amending and repealing sections of ordinance 2438, the transportation transportation system development charges ordinance, based upon a new methodology report dated April 2022, and setting an effective date.
Any other staff comments? Okay, any other discussion? Have a roll call vote.
Counselor Puente.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Counselor Schaub?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Swanson?
Yeah.
Counselor Cabralis?
Yes, yes.
Council Bill number 3181 has been duly passed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Council Bill number 31H2.
Council Bill 3182 has been duly introduced and is a resolution, and as such requires one reading. May we please have the reading by the title only, if there's no objection?
Council Bill number 3182, a resolution establishing a rate schedule for transportation system development charges, including the interchange management area charge and an alternative calculation fee, pursuant to a recently updated transportation system development charges methodology and setting an effective date for imposition of the fees and charges.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Cabralis?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Swanson?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Schaub?
Yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Counselor Puente?
Yes, yes.
All right, Council Bill 3182 has been duly passed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Council Bill number 31H3.
Council Bill 3183 has been duly introduced, and it's a resolution, and as such requires one reading. Now, we have, and may we have, please have the reading by title only, if there's no objection.
Council Bill number 3183, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 for purposes of adding an additional full-time equivalent FTE position to the Planning Department Fund.
All right, have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Chris Kerr, Community Development Director. I think this can be pretty short. I know Tony Turley's available as well, if you have any questions. But essentially, as you know, our our department is very busy. In fact, I have over there on the board, I was going to show you the nice development activity. Ariel, just to remind you how busy we are, but I know that's not really necessary. And essentially, as much as I don't like to do it, I really thought it was important that I come back and get another planner position added into this budget year. So that, you know, I've already proposed a new a new planner to be added to the department for next year. And that'll be in the, we're going to discuss that, I suppose, on Saturday. But this was really a chance to get in front of that. It will get me a couple of months. Let me go out, try to hire somebody, bring someone in, get them up and running. We're very busy, something I think is important to do. And all it really does under the budget is specifically add that one FTE position, because there's already enough revenue in the in our our budget. We're about two and a half times our expenses for the year. There's no reason to make any amendments to the financials in the budget for this. This is specifically just adding that one FTE, which is a requirement under the RSs for budgeting. Do we put that into this year's budget, so that I can bring that person in? That's that's as simple as I can make the request. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
I just have a couple of clarifying items. This is Tony Turley, the Director. We also, we have enough appropriation authority without doing in addition to the budget, to doing a supplemental on the on the dollar side. And it's not adding a planner now and adding a planner in the new budget cycle. This planner would continue into the next budget.
I have a question. Looking at a new planner, what is he, tell me what his job is going to be exactly?
Sure. So, as you know, we basically, our planning department and the staff that we have works on both long range and what we call current planning. What you've seen us talking about, basically with Colin, as our senior planner, working on these WDO amendments that you're that we've been working on. That's sort of long, long range work that we do. What we're really getting the most activity on recently is our, what we call quasi judicial activity. We need to do our our reviews of developments when they walk in the door. We have to do it within X amount of days. We have to do the full review, hearings, notices, staff reports, findings, everything that goes with those. We're seeing, again, depending on how you measure it, we're, I mean, we're seeing easily twice as much work as we saw two years ago, more than supports the need for that position. That's what the person's going to be essentially assigned to be doing.
And it's a little different from prior budgets that we've done, or budget supplementals we've done, because there's really no financial adjustment to the budget in this. We have the appropriation authority. This is simply adjusting the FTE, so we can hire the position sooner than later. If we weren't able to do this tonight, I think we'd have to wait till July 1. And this gives Chris an opportunity to kind of get a jump on it.
I just have a question and clarification. Chris, I heard you say that the revenue is already there, so it's not a matter of finding the money. What what's the revenue's job if you didn't hire, if we didn't approve an additional FTE, and that revenue is sitting there, what's his job? What what? You see what I'm saying? You said, we essentially have the revenue to go ahead and pay to fund this full-time person, which is great. And I, just for the for the record, I totally agree, you need it. I'm just saying, what would that revenue's job be if it weren't funding a new FTE?
I think I could jump into that. So the planning department.
This is my ignorant about the budget.
Oh, no, it's a great question to ask.
Need to clear it out.
Yeah, so the the planning department is primarily funded by two funds, a general fund, and it is also the building fund. The building fund is a dedicated fund, can only pay for building fund services. So you may see, and you will see, when you look at the supplemental budget, that the revenue in the building fund has increased sharply because of the amount of development. But that doesn't help provide planning services. So it's the fee revenue generated out of permits and other and other revenue sources that pay for the rest of the planning department that do do the planning. So that the revenue that's generated is intended to help support the level of service for the planning.
So that's basically its job, is to support the level of, that's all I was wondering.
It is, yeah. I mean, it's a good way, it's a good way to put it. And the the idea, I think, as Chris said, is that development fees pay for development costs, and planning is the cost of development.
That's all I am.
That's.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote.
Counselor Schaub?
Yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Puente?
Yes.
Counselor Swanson?
Yes.
Counselor Cabralis?
Yes.
Right, Council Bill 3183 has been duly passed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Council Bill number 3184.
Council Bill 3184 has been duly introduced and is a resolution, and as such requires one reading. May we please have the reading by title only, if there's no objection?
Council Bill number 3184, a resolution initiating the jurisdictional transfer of certain county roads located within Woodburn city limits from Marion County to the city of Woodburn.
Right.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Chris Kerr. So this is a request to adopt a resolution that's specifically going to initiate the jurisdictional transfer of four recently annexed roadways from Marion County to the city. Now, a lot of you probably already know this. Historically, when we annex property into the city, what we do is we also include the adjacent right of way so that it's included within the boundary of the city. And that's important, because it lets us manage those improvements. We issue the permits, they build it to our standards, everything else that goes with it, the way we want it to be built, rather than the county. Now, what's happened recently is the county has made us aware and notified us that there's an additional procedural step that we should take in order to formally transfer that jurisdiction of that roadway. That legal transfer of jurisdiction is what this initiation resolution does. Essentially, by signing off on the resolution, we forward it to the county. It will go before the County Board of County Commissioners. They'll put it on a consent agenda, authorize the change, and legally, the jurisdictional transfer can take place. I know it's a bit unusual, and it was a bit of a surprise for us. We haven't done this before in the past. We have a way to catch this in the future, so that we can make sure we're dotting this I and crossing this T. When essentially, when a property gets annexed in the future, and we bring in that right of way, we'll also include within that ordinance, a separate provision that clarifies that we're at this time asking the county to formally transfer jurisdiction to the city. So it's a it's much more of a procedural issue than anything else. And we've been working with the county on this for a while, so we're confident there won't be an issue when we send it over to them and it gets transferred over to us. And again, there shouldn't be any change financially for what it means. We've actually already planned on, and in many cases, have already been maintaining these roadways that were, again, within the city's boundaries. We've been issuing those permits for those. We typically just give them to the county as sort of a courtesy review. We do this back and forth. It's a good idea. Oftentimes, a right of way gets split, and we have issues where we need to do this, issues about where we transition between county and city roadways. And there's always unusual scenarios, such as Buickville Road, where we do have very separate agreements as to what the county and the city want to see happen there. And those are important to go out and and address separately, but for the vast, vast majority, they're easily handled this way. We'll bring them in. This is simply going to address four recent ones that we've had, that we're currently looking at for development activity. It'll clear it up, keep them moving along. The county asked for it, and we're on board with it happening.
Where are the, where are these roads?
There are four. One is Stub Road. So two of them were up around Smith Creek, the new Smith Creek development, Par Road and Stub. Another is a Cooley Road annexation that happened probably three, four years ago. And because now it's coming in and being looked at as a subdivision approval, it's come to the attention of the county, and they said, well, since it's being developed, we want to make sure that you formally do this transfer. And again, we want to make sure it happens, so that we have the authority to regulate what happens in our right of ways. And the third one is, I want to say, oh, Brown Street. At the southern end, we've had a lot of sort of one-off annexations coming in in there, and this will pick those up. The very southern terminus of Brown.
Questions or comments? All right, there's a roll call vote as well.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Swanson?
Yes.
Counselor Cabralis?
Yes.
Counselor Puente?
Yes.
Counselor Schaub?
Yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
All right, Council Bill 3184 has been duly passed. All right, City Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have to is to remind everybody of our budget committee meeting on Saturday at 9 o'clock, right here in this room. It's the first time we're meeting in a couple of years in person. I'm very excited just about that. Hope to see you there.
All right. A report to you.
Oh.
I know you do.
Yes, I do. I just wanted to announce that on Saturday, the CERT team from Woodburn Fire Department held an exercise at Woodburn High School. It was a simulation of a an earthquake. And there were participants, CERT members, I should say, from Yamm Hill, Newburgh, of course, Woodburn. And there was another one.
A new one from Aurora there?
I think, yeah, Aurora, right. And it was a fantastic, you know, exercise. All of the participants were, you know, it's kind of a learning process when you create this. Yeah, the scenario. So I'm just very proud that Woodburn Fire Department has taken on the CERT team, where as before, it was with Marion County. where, as before, it was with Marion County, but now Woodburn Fire Department has it. So, and I think working together with other communities is just essential. And Woodburn should be proud that we have so many. I think there were about approximately 50 people at this exercise. So, you know, Woodburn should be very happy that we have this-
Able and ready team, including-
Yes, I'm on, right. So anyway, thank you. And also, our great mayor was there as well, so we were well represented.
This CERT member was in Idaho with her four-year-old grandson, so I totally missed it. The exciting news that I add is that there will be a collaboration, again, ongoing collaboration. Collaboration is how everything happens. So a collaboration between Marion County and Array of Hope Today, which is a nonprofit here in Woodburn, will be working to further the efforts of helping those who are outside of houses get in houses. So that's something that's coming, that collaboration is very exciting to me.
All right, go to Zoom in. Counselor Puente, Counselor Corrales.
Nothing here.
The only thing that I want to say is that I am going on vacation, so I won't be at our next Counselors' Meeting next time.
Have fun.
Well deserved. Counselor Cornwell?
Thank you.
There's, there's just too much to begin to start. I'm, I'm happy that the officer that was injured today is going to hopefully bounce back sooner than later. And I know this school, since I work in the schools, they're going to be addressing it then because, there because he is the SRO for the high school. So it was kind of, you know, they didn't, they won't know about it clearly until tonight or tomorrow. I've been spending a lot of time at the Centennial Park. The trees that are planted there are so interesting. It's just, I'm, there's trees there that I have not seen before, and I want to put in my yard. Unfortunately, I see some of the sequoias have passed already, so it was a bad time to plant those, but I'm sure they'll address that issue. And I'm just glad that it's spring. I've been to many nurseries locally, the flower nurseries, and although prices have gone up a little bit, they're eager and ready to fill your yard with joy and flowers. So I would encourage everyone to get out there and shop locally and support our economy as far as the nursery people.
Great, Mr. Mayor.
Got a few things to look forward to. The Day of the Child is this Saturday at the, at Heritage Elementary. Dia del Niño. And we will have a Cinco de Mayo celebration. Our Downtown Association, in conjunction with the Aware Food Bank and the Oregon Food Bank, is kind of rescuing the Cinco de Mayo that's not happening at Chamacada, and so they're going to put it downtown, at the Downtown Plaza. So got kind of the same band, same dance groups. So Chamacada's been, like, it's a team to do that. And then you have the, it was, it's, it just gives you so much pause when you're in a room. And, and the CERT team is so well-planned, and Walt, and Uli, and, and Rob. Because you think about, like, if this is really happening, like, you're presenting that room, and they're all being dispersed in neighborhoods, and the, and the simulations are like, this person's dead, this person's wounded, like, they're practicing their communications back and forth. And so we'll all be thankful that that team is, is there. And then, as Mayor, I got to read the five very nice little kids at the library. The library invited me to read a book, and then, like, it got postponed and postponed, but like, that was easily the best 10 minutes of my week, reading to nice little kids at the library. Anyway, on that note, on that happy note, we will all see you in two weeks and attend the motion for adjournment. Yes, we have executive session, all right. So we're not quite yet.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to proceed into executive session based upon the authority of ORS 192.6602D.
Second.
And Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, you should cite that statute yourself, because the statute asks that the Chair read the statute or vote on the motion.
Great, all right. So the executive session will be based on authority of ORS 192.6602D. Great, all right, this time we'll take a few minutes to-
We still need to vote on the motion.
All right, we had a second second-
We did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, vote. All right. Okay, the City Council is returning from executive session. No action was taken by the Council while in executive session. Okay. We have a work session now.
So exciting. Uh-oh, somebody locked in? Just kidding. Now the light are on. He thought it was candy? So you have a big left gum, my $2 gum? He wants more candy because he accidentally ate sugar-free gum. I know, it's a travesty. He probably ate all the good ones. I hate Kit Kat. I don't know, is there any more peppermint patties that they want? I'd like to make a motion to make sure that more peppermint patties end up in the-
I second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. I like it. Here, have a monkey way, that's the only decent thing left in there. Looks unlocked. Okay. I said gratefully.
We have returned. Once again, we have Dr. Kerr with us.
Doctor. Because I'm tight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, Chris Kerr, Community Development Director. Of, so appreciate this opportunity. This is really just a work session, fairly informal, and to talk about the, I know you're very familiar with it, the middle housing code amendments that we've been working on, working through with the Planning Commission. Again, Colin Cortez is going to walk us through them. And again, the whole purpose tonight is just to go through, answer any questions you have, see what kind of feedback you have. And if there's anything we can bring back, look into more for, you know, legality, or if you want us to look at maybe what other cities are doing, something we can follow up on. That's what we're really looking for, with the ultimate goal of coming back to you with a finalized, polished set of amendments for us to consider for, at a public hearing.
Chris, I only have two things. I promised Chris that I would not dominate this with my favorite platform to stand on for the last year. Yeah. But Chris, I just have two things. First question is, is middle housing affordable housing? Should they not be confused?
There is nothing in the middle housing bill that requires the housing to be affordable.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that a couple of meetings ago, Counselor Cabralis made a comment, and I've thought a lot about it, since she made this comment, because, because I think the Counselor is correct in saying that a lot of the new development is inconsistent with the traditional types of housing that we've seen in Woodburn. Single-family ranch, ranches on nice lots with yards. And as I thought more about that, you know, I realized that a lot of the new density requirements from the city will, are in fact going to change the face of Woodburn and all the other communities in exchange for higher densities and putting more people in the same space. So is, I mean, is, is it fair to say that as we go about implementing these to comply with state law, that we are apt to see these types of changes occurring in Woodburn? Higher densities, less parking, fewer garages, more duplexes, and smaller lots?
I think you're right, and it, it really is a challenge. But what it really, it speaks to this big picture idea that everyone just kind of needs to get their head around, that the Oregon land use system is set up for cities to develop intensely, right? To develop a lot of development within urban growth boundaries, and to not have any development outside it in order to protect those farmlands, natural areas, all the good farm preservation and other environmentally sensitive areas that we like, that we like to protect outside UGBs. Within the UGB, the idea is those areas need to be as dense as possible to accommodate all the population growth that's coming. And what you're getting is this continual push and pull of, well, do we kind of, believe me, the, the term, you know, stack 'em and pack 'em that you hear coming out of Portland, which is, we just got to get more people in here, we'll just stack 'em up like Hong Kong or something. We'll just go higher and higher and higher. That's not that far-fetched. The idea, and what we really have, is this issue of you're getting individual cities being forced to accommodate higher-density housing within their UGB. And it's a real challenge for local communities to address that as sensitively as they can. We're trying to. I, I could talk literally for an hour. I think Woodburn is actually doing it the right way, and has been for a while. I think that we've gone out, identified areas in our, of our city where we say, that's an area where we think we can accommodate higher-density housing, or maybe this higher than your standard single-family detached housing, sort of in these nodal areas that we have in the Southwest District. That is comparatively high-density housing, sort of what you see in the majority of the Smith property. But what I like of, I can say, what I think works well about, say, the Smith property, is you have this variety of housing. There's an apartment complex in there that's built, that's the, sort of the classic three-story high that's being built right now, that's getting close to getting final, probably two, three months away. And we also have fairly large lot, single-family homes along the north side, sort of rimming around the estate. And within the middle, we have townhouses along alleys. We have single-family homes that are detached, but still on very narrow lots. And with all that, we, that's, that's the way to meet the state mandated required high densities we have to hit. And I think does it as sensitively as we can. It also provides those open space areas. I'm not saying it's a perfect development, but that is, I honestly believe, is sort of the best the city can hope to do for our currently unannexed areas that have to be brought in. We have to meet these higher densities.
And despite, and despite that, the legislature has mandated this for the city. So, I mean, certainly I've accepted it because it's a preemption over local desires to control our own aesthetic and our own, what the market demand is in our community. But, but as we move forward with this, I think the thing that the Council needs to understand is that, one, this is a state mandate. It is a preemption of our authority to dictate to the city about how we're going to do things, and they've applied it across the board, all cities. And the other thing that I think is particularly concerning to our city that we'll need to watch is the, depending on market conditions, there is no protection for historic neighborhoods. There is no protection for culturally significant communities, or our stock of lower, more affordable, older homes that could be subject to gentrification and redevelopment pressure because it becomes more profitable to buy that property and flip it into a higher-density something. So it is kind of what we've seen in Portland. We could talk about displaced communities in Portland, and the potential for that now, I think, here exists. And so that is my rant. I promised Chris that I would not dominate it, this rant, but these are things that are concerning. This, this legislation was hotly contested and opposed by cities for these reasons, and we lost. So you're, this is where we are. Thank you, Chris, I'll be quiet now, let you do it.
And, and I'm going to let Colin walk through a lot of the details, and you've had a few work sessions on this. We've had a, we went out and hired a professional consultant to walk us through. Our real goal in this has been to absolutely, positively meet the legal requirements that are set down by the state. That's the mandate. The question is, do we need to go further? I can be frank, the other cities are going further. Their cities like Eugene and Portland have other ideas about how to create more density within their communities and some of these other kind of steps. Those, by and large, are not being proposed here with the city. That's not what's coming out of the Planning Commission, it's not what staffs recommend. And Colin can walk us through this. That, that's, when I talked about earlier, I was talking about this overall sort of principles I go at, looking at these code amendments. In this case, it's, it's much more finite. It's what do I need to do to meet the code, to meet the legal requirements of the state? We think, we know we're doing that. And I don't think we're frankly going a whole lot further. Colin can speak towards it, he knows, he's more familiar with the language than I am. And we can talk about where there's some flexibility for us to make sort of our decisions locally.
Before Colin starts, though, I want to rewind to when you first introduced this way back. There are penalties, right? Like, if we don't meet them, not only do we have to meet them, we have to exceed them by a ridiculous percentage or something, right? Like, there's, there are penalties for not complying.
There are, and the initial sort of penalty is, we have a deadline we have to meet.
Right.
Which is by July 1st, if we do not adopt modifications to our plans, right? To, such as the WDO, our zoning code, that meets the requirements of HP 2001, then the state's model code, they've already done their own code rewrite, right? That's just the general model code that will apply to any city that hasn't already adopted it. And what it means is someone could walk into the city, an applicant, and say, "City, you haven't adopted your code yet? I don't really need your permission, I'm going to utilize the state's model, I have it right here." And that's not something we want to copy, I've seen it, it was sent out to everybody. It doesn't meet sort of the Woodburn's needs, so we want to make sure we do it ours the best way we can.
Thanks.
Okay, Colin Cortez, Senior Planner, back again. So give me a moment to load the PowerPoint, and we'll go from there. All right, so I'm going to take a few minutes to go over background, although we just got quite a bit of that in the past few minutes. Segue through the, the bitter medicine and get towards the things that might actually be pleasant to talk about and over which we still have control as a city. So, moving right along, well, we pretty much know why we're here, it's a work session. We will have to come back to you with an ordinance that you can adopt to meet state law, essentially. But a work session is useful for giving us some additional comments and directions as we're doing that. So of course, there is a bill, everyone knows. As a reminder, what middle housing is, it's duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, what they sound like, two, three, four units in a structure, townhouses and cottage clusters. And you might ask cottage? So administrative law now defines a cottage cluster, it's fewer than four detached dwelling units per acre, with a footprint each of less than 900 square feet. So that's a cottage. So effectively, as a result of all these changes, multiple family development will be redefined as something that's having five or more dogs. So that'll be the new context for development moving forward. So breezing through the background, back in March of 2020, as this was all coming about, the city applied for and got state grants that funded the middle housing consultant Chris talked about. Consultant drafted amendments, presented the middle work session to the Council last June. And shortly thereafter, the Council passed a resolution formally initiating amendments to the comprehensive plan and the development ordinance to comply with state law. So in that time, staff has made edits to the consultant's draft, being careful to preserve what's necessary to comply with state law, and then focusing on what, what Woodburn could tailor. Planning Commission had a workshop of its own in March, and then in April 14th, they had a public hearing and recommended approval of LA 21-02. And as mentioned in the memo, I mentioned that the vote was three to one. Chair Piper voted against, and he explicitly explained to staff that it was a symbolic vote. He thanked staff and simply wanted to show his, I would describe his winter of discontent with Salem, knowing full about the city would have to adopt these changes. As Chris mentioned, the deadline's June 30th. If the city were to fail to comply, then the state model code will apply by default. That would be bad. And then if staff were to act upon the Commission's recommendation of approval that the majority voted for, staff would return the amendment for a public hearing, which we're tentatively targeting for on May 23rd. That way, you can get an ordinance before you sometime in June and meet the June 30th deadline. So two slides about basic compliance. So there are two things that are not up for grabs. So one is minimum lot size or area. So the state anticipates- So the state anticipated this by cities and basically said, thou shalt. So we are going to require with these amendments, the largest minimums that we are allowed to require under state law, which are encapsulated in the table to the right, courtesy of the consultant. So we can't ask for bigger. These are what they're going to be. Not much more to say to that. So I'm going to be moving on to the other compliance item, parking. So we will be requiring the highest ratio of off-street parking that we can require under the law. So for middle housing, more than a house, it's going to basically be one for dwelling. So for example, a duplex, it's two spaces, triplex, three, et cetera. The standard today in the code is two per any type of dwelling. That won't be the case anymore. We can and will continue to require two stalls for a house, for example, and two for per apartment. But for these middle housing types, it'll be what you see here. I will add that for developments that do ought to provide parking, which staff does expect because there are market forces and in this market, I fully expect that developers will choose to provide parking because potential renters and buyers will expect that. The city can't require that that parking be garaged or in carports. That's also a requirement of legislation. But I also expect that developers who do provide parking will probably choose to provide it in garages or carports.
What did you say about the legislature?
Oh, the legislation sets how much parking cities can require as minimums.
But you said something about garaging. Did you say that the legislature said, yes, you need garages?
No, it said that cities cannot require parking to be garaged or in a carport. So moving on to polishing the silver lining, as I call it. So this amendment has a few objectives, including minimum compliance with House Bill 2001.
Sorry, Colin, I know I'm always, it takes me a minute. Go back to what you just said. So does that mean a single family dwelling unit within compliance of this can just be a house without a garage or without a carport?
Oh, no, a house is not middle housing, so it can continue to be required to have two stalls.
It has to be one of those multi-dwelling units.
Yes, something in the list here. A duplex or triplex, quadplex, townhouse or cottage.
Townhouse, but townhouse is included. So it could be a townhouse with no carport or garage technically.
Yes.
Okay.
And Colin also too, so like a duplex would have two parking spaces, four for a quadplex. And those people have had, if there was a two-car family, each one of those, then they're parking on the street.
That's correct. And again, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Colin, this means that for a single family home right now in this, well, let's say on July 2nd, after this is adopted and let's say after the effective date, a townhouse can be built and the minimum required parking is one parking space for a townhome with no garage. However, a single family detached house that's built would have to meet our current requirements, which is two parking spaces in a garage and space in front of that garage for two more parking spaces. So essentially four off-site parking, off-street parking spaces.
Townhouse dwellers are going to be parking in the street around, yay.
So what, some of the things, and I asked Colin to kind of emphasize these, I call these poison pills because that's really what they were. The legislature is aware of the fact that cities were going to be reluctant to implement these things. And they said, well, what cities might do is say, great, all townhomes have to be on 20,000 square foot lots, which is why they went in and set these very specific lot sizes. They said, great, townhomes need eight parking spaces. That solves the problem. No one's going to build that. So they put in and put a very specific restriction, capping the number of space. They did this to a lot of different elements in here that we, that we have to follow and follow along.
So Chris, just, just one more question. I promise I'm not going to talk a lot. But let's say I wanted to buy a single family home downtown in Woodburn and put a fourplex on it as an investment property. Would I be able to tear down that garage and those parking spates, put up my fourplex and, and now in downtown Woodburn?
Yes.
Have a different parking standard than my neighbors when their properties were constructed? And?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I could do that. See, that's my point about the gentrification.
How about my point of clarification, which is I'm dealing with three different people who are now displaced because their owners of their properties they were currently renting have made a deal with a corporation who's going to come in and build, build multi-units. So it's, this is definitely having an effect. And I'm not angry at the city. I'm not angry in, I'm just angry, I'm just angry about this because it is a random one-size-fits-all and one-size does not fit all. And this is nothing about affordable housing. And I know Councilor Cabralis, yes, Scott, I am on my high horse, but Councilor Cabralis is, I see eye to eye on this. So I hope I'm not speaking for you, Debbie, but I will say that if we, if we want more affordable housing in Woodburn, we're going to have to get pretty crafty in order to overcome things like this that are being. Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
I was recapturing my train of thought. Oh, okay. Uh, parking. Okay. So getting into, having taken the bitter medicine, focusing on polishing that silver lining. So of course, the main objective of this amendment is minimum compliance. So, and there are a few additional things that staff hopes to accomplish with this. So they're bulleted on, in the memo and on screen in front of you. So one is correcting a small conflict between the development ordinance and the comprehensive plan about what the minimum maximum densities are in one of the residential zoning districts. So since we're amending the code and it relates to residential development, we're taking the opportunity to correct that. And it's called out in the edits with a margin note. The second is part of the overall objectives of the bill, which is regulated in some places, is that cities can't regulate middle housing more stringently than they would a house. So as long as the treatment's equitable, whether it's stringent or lenient, it has to be equitable. So that affects the way the architectural provisions in the code today are and have to be applied. So the proposal is to consolidate two sections that are similar for no logical apparent reason that we can figure it out, why our predecessor's wrote it that way, into one new section that's mostly a table, both to comply with the law, but also because it's a good idea and it'll be easier to implement. And I'll talk more about that in upcoming slides. And then the last item is tweaking a few of the residential development standards that are unduly constraining, not just for middle housing, but residential developments generally, particularly in flag law contexts. There's a minimum setback to flag law shared driveways. Why, we don't know, but it's five feet. It doesn't really need to be that. So staff is proposing it be a foot because shared access is sized anyway for emergency and public access. So there doesn't seem to be a need to have a setback. Another is to exempt townhouse from a public utility easement along one of its sides for corner lots. Now that the largest lot size that the city can ask for, for a townhouse would be 1,500 square feet, 15 feet wide, we, for a builder who might choose to build that, it makes sense that this is a new reality to be willing to go easy on one of the corner frontages for an easement, so that a townhouse could actually span the full width of a lot. And then the last item relates to the multifamily district, and this is to add a zoning adjustment item. This is an existing application type that comes with a list of things in the code that developers can request to adjust to a limited degree. And the proposal is to allow adjustment of the minimum inside rear setbacks in the RM zone. They're very deep compared to other jurisdictions. And staff experience has been for at least two potential projects, it's been prohibitive for developers. So we're proposing to allow them to make a request to the planning commission to make the setbacks more shallow, but only to a limited degree. That basically covers it. So the main focus, I think, that would be most fruitful would be architecture. Because when it comes to what the public will see and feel for development generally, including middle housing, this is where we have a great degree of control over, over how it results on the landscape. So as I mentioned, that we have two architectural provisions now that are set up for new houses. So they're going to be consolidated and reworked, so they apply to both houses and middle housing, formatted with some text, but mostly as a table. So it's easier to read, understand and administer. They also establish not only minimums, in other words, what builders would have to do, but also a menu or point system. So it's set up that there's a number of things that you have to do. And there are some other items that developers could choose to do and get points. The purpose of this being that the amendment also proposes a total minimum number of points the developer has to get for a house or middle housing unit. But it's up to the developer to choose from the dozen, some menu items, whichever ones the builders prefer to achieve that total number of points.
Can I ask something? Colin, just clarify for me, that this idea of creating, oh, a more, this menu of architectural, they're called architectural and design standards. We currently have some. We have that, we have a sort of this menu, it's sort of like a point system right now for single family homes as they come in. But I want to emphasize this, under the new H Bill, our House Bill 2001 requirements, we can't apply different standards to the single family homes as opposed to these middle houses. So the planning commission and staff thought it was worthwhile going in, diving into that and making it something that we think works for both, right? That's the real reason we're getting in there, so that we still can't have some kind of modicum of, of control over what these middle houses look like, but we still have to understand that it's also going to be applicable to single family homes, and that's a requirement under the law.
So the idea of a menu is not to punish the single family home builder, hold them to a standard that, of higher architecture, basically. What it gives them the opportunity to not just build a bunch of boxes, right? Regardless of where they are, but to be able to make sure they are pleasing to us.
That's correct. And we tried to come up with that, worked with the consultant to create that, that long checklist of menu items. But again, the real tricky part is it needs to be applicable to both. We don't typically write architectural standards that are applicable to both fourplexes and single family homes. They're somewhat different animals. So, and I think this gets theirs. Is that right, Colin? That was the thinking about how we worked back into it?
I would characterize it as the provisions don't get it a particular architectural style, but they get it something that looks house-like is the way I would describe it. So for example, for any dwelling, there's a minimum pitch for roof. And it's also set up so that if a developer provides a steeper roof of a higher pitch or more, there's a point for that. And if it's even higher, it's an additional number of points. That's an example.
And the rationale behind this is, again, is the, what we had heard from initial work sessions with the council and the planning commission, staff completely agrees, is we want to try to minimize the adverse impacts that these alternative housing types suddenly taking place, mostly on existing lots of record that were designed for single family homes and are, may get placed in existing single family neighborhoods to try to minimize those disruptions. And really, one way to, one of the big ways to get at that is what these facades look like, what they look like from the street, and even right down to, I think, driveway width and these kinds of things, and how those are formed. That, that was sort of the approach. So again, we were trying to find ways that we can work under the code and come up with something that works for us. And we, we thought, and that's kind of where this comes down. That's where we think we can go at it, approach it, that kind of reaches that middle level for everybody.
Excellent timing, because on the next slide, there's more that goes with this, including driveways. So the amendment edits another section that exists in the code about number of driveways that development can, can have to reflect the new middle housing reality, and it's tailored to be reasonable and equitable. In these architectural provisions, there are complementary provisions about garages. In the provisions today for architecture for houses, there are reasonable limits on how much of a garage can be a part of a facade seen from the street, so that the house is not almost entirely garage. So that concept has been carried forward into the menu. And it's also been written such a way that if a site is large enough, developers could choose to have a driveway that goes past a, a structure with dwellings or perhaps through and under it. So there's a parking court behind the dwellings, so that there might be detached garages or carports in the back. They're not written with the assumption that all the parking has to be part of the structure in the front. So for people who are able to, based on the size and disposition of a lot, and are unable to direct vehicles from the street pass or through a building to the back of a property and have parking set up there, the regulations subtly acknowledge and encourage that. So they're basically set up so that they work for a house, they work for middle housing, and they work for developments where the parking isn't necessarily visible from the street, but in fact, maybe behind the dwellings. And I was thinking of something before it slipped my mind. Oh, yes. And they're also set up so that when driveways continue past the apron onto private property, they don't consume too much of front yards. And they're written in a way to be clear and objective and applied to all the housing types. And this goes to point number six, which is that they also encourage new development to provide alleys or shared rear lanes, because in those contexts, the builders don't have to worry about any of the garage architectural provisions at all, because in the back, off an alley, you can do whatever you want to with parking. Because basically, the public will not be seeing it. And then lastly, the provisions come with a few new illustrations, so it'll be clear to builders what the provisions are getting at. So if anything, this is the most discretionary topic when it comes to middle housing with the consultant, the commission, and us as staff, we think we've come up with something that'll protect the look and feel of new housing in the city, houses and middle housing. And we think it'll work well, particularly for development that chooses to have alleys or shared rear lanes. And we believe that there will still be identifiable front yards and that dwellings will look as aesthetically good as we think we can reasonably get in a fair and equitable way. So with that, showing an example of an actual duplex that was built some years ago. Was it because I didn't know what other image to go on the slide? If you have any questions or direction, now's the time.
I have a number of questions, but I'll defer to my colleague first. I'd like to begin with a compliment. I really thought that you folks did a great job on limiting the business use in residential areas. You put that together in the WDO. So that's, that was well done. Colin, I'd like to discuss section 2.07.20, the accessory dwelling units.
I'm getting the existing code book because this amendment doesn't propose any changes to that section. And I have it open in front of me.
Okay. I, I'm making an assumption, and I don't know if it's true, but is it generally considered that an accessory dwelling unit would be intended for human occupation?
Yes.
Okay. So can RVs, recreational vehicles, or trailer homes be considered accessory dwelling units?
No, that's not the status quo and nothing would change about that.
How about if RVs or trailer homes remove their wheels?
That would continue to be prohibited.
I noticed that in section G, it said that vehicles licensed by other states other than Oregon, I know, it says that it prohibits vehicles licensed by Oregon. But I'm wondering about vehicles licensed by other states other than Oregon, are they permitted?
I'm confident that was not the intent, but I'll look to Chris to see if he has any additional comments, since he worked on this ADU language a few years ago.
I don't remember why that's written that way. Well, we can look into it. Clearly, the intent is not to allow mobile homes. We have first accessory dwelling units. We have very specific standards as to how they look, where they get situated, special setbacks. It's never been the intent that you could use an RV for one. That's a completely different requirement. There are, of course, opportunities, people to use them on a temporary basis around homes. We have different ordinances to cover that. I'm happy to look at that. We'll look and see if maybe that slips through. We have different ordinances that cover that. I'm happy to look at that and we'll look and see if maybe that's a slip through for certain.
Okay. Where is the requirement in this for off-street parking?
It would be in the table that exists that has parking ratios for developments generally. This is table 3.05A. And the amendment for middle housing would codify that for the middle housing types, the duplex through cottage cluster, it would be one minimum stall per dwelling unit.
So an accessory dwelling unit would require one off-street parking space?
It's actually, yeah, so this is, so let me go back about two years. That's a really good question. Probably three years ago, we worked on and adopted specific accessory dwelling unit language into the code. Shortly thereafter, and one of the requirements we had was for off-street park, I think it was for one off-street parking space for an accessory structure.
I remember.
Shortly thereafter, the state specifically went in and model, and did, and passed an, or passed a law that stated that no local government could apply off-street parking requirements to accessories dwelling units, and we had to remove that from our code. Came right from the state. Yes, it used to be in there. You're correct. And we had to take it out.
So it was mandated. Okay. However, correct me if I'm wrong. The city still has the right and opportunity to declare a street in front of an accessory dwelling unit as a no-parking zone.
We often do that, depending on the street where it's at, typically on one side. That's very common.
So these laws weren't complimentary. They didn't say no parking. They didn't say you can't have a off-street parking, but you also can't make it a no-parking zone on the street.
That's correct. It doesn't say that. It only addresses off-street parking.
So we could do that. Okay. Where is the requirement for the accessory dwelling unit to be plumbed for water and sewer?
The way that the accessory dwelling, I know that I'm certain that it's silent on it, I believe. Is there any reference in there?
Well, I think the WDO is because I believe, but don't know for certain. There's some other city ordinance that Public Works administers that makes it so that every new dwelling has water and sewer because that's what happens. But I don't know the actual mechanics of how Public Works administers that.
So what you're saying is that if somebody applies to put in an accessory dwelling unit, it has to be plumbed for water and sewer?
It would be, and that's a requirement under our building code that we have, that they would have to do that and get those permits. Where we would allow it to be occupied as a dwelling unit.
And it would also be subject to SDC payments as well.
It is. There's no waiver or reduction for STCs for this.
Okay. I'd like to move on to table 3.04A.
I have it open, the driveway table.
Number one, one to four dwellings with one paved driveway, 14-foot minimum, 16-foot maximum. Why do we have a span in there? Why don't we just say what the driveway should be rather than giving people a choice between 14 and 16 feet?
Probably the best way to begin to answer this question is, this may not be the best table to look at anymore as of 45 minutes ago. Because the transportation amendment is going to be changing this table quite a bit. So if I may, let me flip back earlier in my binder to what the new table will be and then go from there.
Colin, you've got more books than I do.
And he knows his book. It's really impressive.
I can tell you that in the transportation amendment that you voted on, well, like 45 minutes ago, in this table, staff is, well, there is an edit now to clarify particularly for the one to four dwellings column, the concept of one and two-way, which never made sense to any of us, particularly for a house. This is like, if you point, like on the driveway on the screen, for example, you're like, to talk of one or two ways just doesn't make sense. It's more just like how wide should it be? And so there are new values in the amendment that allow staff to reasonably apply the table to a house or duplex, triplex, et cetera, so that the minimum is what it functionally is for the parking needed. So if a builder is saying, look, a two-car-wide garage, we can act accordingly. Or if it's a one-car-wide garage, we can act accordingly. So there'll still be a two-way, one-way distinction. It's just the values will be different and we will administer them to be reasonable for a building.
Well, the reason I'm concerned about it is that it has, it specifically addresses the one to four dwelling. And I'll give you an example of it. The preliminary proposal you have before you right now for Marion Point is four buildings on one lot, two in front, two in, in the, two in the back, connected by a driveway. And according to a letter from Garrett Stevenson to Chris Curated, February 14th, they've chosen 15 feet wide for their driveway. So my measurement indicates that two pickup trucks can't pass on 15 feet. Pickup trucks are eight feet wide. So they'd require a 16-foot driveway. So I, I'm wondering why we give the developer the opportunity to choose 15 feet as, as opposed to 14 and 16.
So in the context of that development, for which is an application and it's not yet complete and moving forward, the developer, and as a second response to an original development that was denied by the council, where originally it was small lots that had a bunch of driveways along the street. They're proposing clusters of four lots with shared driveways to have more continuous planter strip along the street and more on-street parking. They're proposing that because it's a planned new development, which is a process set up in the code so the developer can request to modify standards in the code. So in the case of this table, whatever the standard is, developer can say, I want to modify or flex the standard to do something different. City, please accept that. So they are requesting that. It seems functional based on the materials they proposed, and it remains to be seen what will happen.
So we could also counterpropose and say, make it 16 feet.
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you. Last one. Table 3.09A, 4.6-1, the public golf course. I just want to, I just want to state what I believe I read and tell me if I'm correct. This is regarding PUDs. In a PUD, the common area is normally considered 30% of the PUD gross area. But if it involves a public golf course, that common area then becomes 10% within the WDO and 5% if it was a private golf course.
I think the way you described your understanding is different than the way it's proposed in the transportation amendment. So the 30% remains the standard. What the footnote six of table 3.09A is saying is that of the 30%, if a golf course is proposed, the golf course can't count for the whole of the 30%. It's structured so that if it's a public golf course, it can be 10% of the 30%. If it's a private golf course, 5% of the 30. And if it has a public bicycle pedestrian path with two points over the golf course, it could count for 15% of the 30%, half of the standard.
So for the PUD, 30% still holds.
That's correct.
But if it's, if they're trying to, if they're trying to count any of the golf course, it only can amount to 10%.
Anywhere from 5% to 15%, 15 at most of the 30.
Good. I have no further questions. Thank you very much. You're right on top of your game, Colin.
Thank you.
Got a question here? Do you have more to go?
Uh, no, no more presentation.
Anything else to wrap it?
No, just to point out, appreciate the comments. And our goal is to come back in around 30 days. Is that what we think?
We're hoping May 23rd for a public hearing.
And we have received some feedback. Is that correct on this so far?
Yes, on and off mostly from small builders like Habitat for Humanity and other potential interested builders. Not a lot of comment though. And we haven't received any formal testimony of any kind so far from the public.
Whatever we get, we'll make sure we provide to you at the hearing in 30 days we bring it forward.
All right. That's up. entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.